They're in the closet, I'll show you.
Okay, I've just been in.
Okay, we're back.
Okay, welcome to the October 20th, 2020 City Council meeting where we are reconvening from closed session where direction was given and no action was taken. And we are convening to, reconvening to open session.
[laughing]
Sorry, I'm still a little wound up. Stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge.
I pledge.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
The motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the meeting up for public communication, the hearing of non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment or speak?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any written communication or blue slips for this item.
Okay, having no, no one from the public who wishes to comment or speak, we are closing the public communications portion of the meeting. And moving on, consent calendar, I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
The motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
Okay, moving on to public hearings, at this time, we're going to open this up for public hearings. We have one item, number four, authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program and adding subsection 13.50, community choice aggregation, to chapter 13 entitled, Public Services, of the Orville Municipal Code. Mr. Paula?
Oh, is this on? Yep. Good evening, Mayor Reynolds and Council. Back again, this is the final step into joining the beauty choice aggregation. They have met, they have agreed to accept Orville into the, into the JPA. Additionally, this would be, this would set up their hearing in, in December where we would have two members join the, join it as well, and that would make us have our full, that would get us our full representation. It is staff's recommendation, we have the first reading and introduced by title only, ordinance 1847, introduction of the city of Orville and the city council authorizing implementation of the community choice aggregation program and adding subsection 1350 to community choice aggregation, chapter 13 entitled, Public Services, in the Orville Municipal Code. So I can answer any question anybody has at this point in time.
Are there any comments or questions from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any written communication or blue slips for this item.
Having none, do we have any questions or comments from this dais? Councilmember Smith wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in reviewing the JPA, CCA, and looking across the state and the impacts of this program as it applies to other communities, there's a little bit of a history lesson, I think, that's important in understanding exactly what we're doing here. If you go back to 1998, Pete Wilson, the governor, signed a law that basically allowed the end-user consumer to purchase power from a power company suppliers of their choice. Because PG&E, as we all know, we, most of us probably receive that service, they're not just in the business of making power, they also distribute power. And they purchase power from a variety of other companies that make it, whether it's hydroelectric, solar, wind, high, nuclear, and other means. There's also geothermal. It's a vast array of different ways that we receive electricity. So 1998, then, consumers, and some of you may remember this, because shortly thereafter, the big Enron scandal that ensued, because as we all know, when we pay a bill to PG&E, the price is set, they can't raise it based, like gasoline, or milk, or lumber, it's set. Well, Enron was accused of basically ginning the system, and the wholesale price went 10, 20 times above the retail rate that PG&E was able to collect back. What happened? PG&E went bankrupt 20 years ago as a result of that. In my opinion, JPAs, which essentially allows government agencies, Chico, Butte County, Orville, and other municipalities, essentially to group up, and this is that program 2.0, in my opinion. So essentially, what we're doing is we're, we're creating, we're creating a, a whole new level of bureaucracy, government, what you have, staff, you have all these different departments, you have a board, and the idea here is, excuse me. The idea that's being presented is that government, government is going to be able to purchase power at a reduced rate better than PG&E can, and sell it back to you, the residential customer, the commercial customer, at a cheaper rate. And, and my, my business sense says, you, you can't create a whole new layer of government to, to engage itself into the purchasing of electricity and then sell it back to the citizens of Orville at a cheaper price. In fact, as I started mentioning earlier, when I looked at the condition of the JPAs across California, they're, they're in a turmoil right now. A lot of them are blaming COVID, but the case is, is that some of them even charge more. So, so what's, what's in it? The idea is that the JPA self-requires that a big chunk of the power that's purchased is purchased through renewable resources, solar, wind, that kind of a thing. And, and so, what carries with it is this concept that we're doing our part to mitigate the impacts of climate change, we're reducing our carbon footprint. But the, but the notion that this program is going to save the citizens of Orville money and deliver power at a better price because the government can engage in the private sector and buy it smarter than PG&E is full hearty, and it's, and in my opinion, a sham. Not true, will not happen, because there's no way you can let, you can add a whole layer of bureaucracy and then turn around and sell it to me cheaper. I don't see that happening. And then when I look at the other JPAs across the state, it is not happening. They're having real trouble. And, and on top of that, there's a lot of consternation, a lot of infighting going on, Sierra Club's involved with the Bay Area's JPA, and, and it just goes on and on and on. It's a mess. So, the other thing is, well, how does that work? So how is it that we're able to deliver power cheaper to the citizens of Orville? Well, because this, we're going to take general fund dollars, $20,000 to get into this program right now, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna seed money this program, okay? And, and it buys us a slot at the table, okay? But that's how it works, we're taking general fund money, kind of like what the government does, the federal government does with the USPS, the mail service, you know, that they're in the whole billions of dollars? The only reason why they can deliver your mail at a slightly cheaper price is because it's underwritten by you, the taxpayer. But, oh, the private sector, FedEx, UPS, they make a profit. And, but, but the, you, anything, typically, anything the government starts and does, they do it for a lot slower and a whole lot more cost. So fundamentally, the concept here, I have a real, this is a real huge hurdle for me. Because when I look at it from the business concept, the business model, I don't understand how you can layer, add a whole layer of government to, and then, and then say that Chico and Butte County are going to be smarter than PG&E, and they're going to go out and buy power, and they're going to deliver it to the customer cheaper. And they're still using all the same infrastructure. PG&E is the company that bills you, PG&E still handles the CARE program, the FARA program, they're still heavily involved, we're not carving out PG&E at all, they, they are major players in this program. And so from A to Z, I, I just really am struggling with this. And, and in light of, this is a brand-new startup, this is a, and there's a lot of cost in getting this thing off the floor, and that's what this seed money is in part all about. And at the end of the day, I don't see it working. Additionally, to that concept, oh, I'll just say that, I've said, I've probably said enough, kind of sitting here preaching, but I, I just fundamentally, from a business model standpoint, really, I'm struggling, and I feel like we're going to spend a bunch of money and at the end of the day, not be able to deliver. In fact, there's all kinds of bailout clauses in this thing, if you read through it, it's just scattered with challenges. So that's my piece at the moment on this.
Councilmember Goodson?
Right, so just for clarification purposes, and thank you so much, Councilman Eric, for that in-depth synopsis. The bottom line is PG&E does not go away. We still have to pay a percentage to them because they're the ones that laid the infrastructure foundation.
Is that a question? If that's a question, yes, they, PG&E has the, PG, what we're paying PG&E really for is transmission, and they would still be transmitting.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Pittman's in the queue, and then I'll, I'll go to you, Councilmember Draper.
All right, thank you.
My comment is really pretty simple. I see the issue as our joint power.
Can't hear.
I can't hear him either.
I'm sorry. Now, how's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I pushed the wrong button here. I see this as just an example of a joint powers agreement in purchasing our health insurance, and our joint powers agreement in purchasing our liability insurance. That's the way I see this agreement. It, it has a way to step in, and there's a way to step out eventually, but we have representation, and that's the bigger part of the process that I see as an advantage. I certainly appreciate Councilman Smith's concerns, and I hope it doesn't go down that path, but I look at it, this is kind of a joint powers agreement to buy things. And if we can buy this power, that's great, and it might be, help us to be competitive for a lot of different things, for other companies to come and whatnot. And anytime we can modulate the cost of power, that'll be a big deal. The difficulty we have now is we're at the mercy of PG&E, completely. And whatever they decide to do is what we're going to do, that's it, that's pretty much it, we have no authority to change anything. At least in this venue, given the concerns, at least we have some authority to at least buy a better product in the, in this, in the world of electricity. One question I have, though, as the city of Orville would be a participant in that, would the benefits of this JPA be just to the city of Orville, or would it follow to the outlying areas of Orville? Because we're buying the power and being supplied, how does that work?
Well, the county is, is a member, so anything to be in the county, they would be through them, and, and the city of Chico's in it. So really, we, we pay, we essentially, our power budget annually is about 15% of the total county power budget.
Okay.
Then we would pay a pro-rata share of 15% throughout, you know, throughout everything. That would be, that would be our stake in it. So the cost would come to us at 15%. We would get the benefit of the co-op, as you're talking about. You talk about another bureaucracy, I don't have any skin in the game, so it really is, it's about, do I believe in, in something here? I think what you're doing is creating another enterprise. We do that with the sewer that we have with the JPA there. Reading has their own electrical enterprise, where they provide all their own electrical there, Gridly does the same thing, I believe. So really, it's another enterprise. This actually has quite a bit less bureaucracy than, than PG&E has in itself, they're quite a large bureaucracy themselves. I think what we do is you get an opportunity to offer another choice other than the monopoly we have with PG&E currently. Currently, I will tell you this, I spoke with Sean Marshall, the executive director of Lean Energy USA this morning. Not a single, not a single CCA that has launched has gone belly up, not one. And that's as of nine o'clock this morning. So that, there's that. The closest one to us that's similar is Valley Clean Energy, which includes Yolo County, Davis, and Woodland. They opened just two years ago, and even with all the stuff going on now, their, their rate stabilization fund, the money they've generated over and above what the cost was, has sustained them through these current times. So I thought that was fairly interesting. Really, and what they're doing to worry about stabilization, we talked about worried about when you're buying in and risk, right now, they were going to launch in 2021, they've launched, they moved that back to the end of 2023, because currently with COVID, is there is an issue with the credits that's going on. The piece, the power charge indifference adjustment, which is when you, you go out and buy energy for a million customers, PG&E does this, and you have a contract for, let's say, five years. And then if you pull power away from that, there's an adjustment they charge back until the next time they buy again. They have a bunch of contracts coming up in January 2024, that's going to drop. Additionally, your resource adequacy that you have to buy, so you buy for your, your average daily pull, your draw, and then when you have those peaks, they go out and open market and buy that, that's the expense of power they buy. They changed the law, and in January 2024, what's happening now, it's becoming a pool that California buys at, so it's going to stabilize that price, and it won't be, you won't get these three- and four-time peak buys. So, so what, so what the, so what they've decided so far with their consultant is, they could buy in now, but they figured it was better to stall that off till the end of 2023 when things be stable, the, and the, and the, the PCA, PCA and the RA will be reduced, it makes a better time to, to launch. So they're not planning on launching until then, but as I stated, Valley Clean Energy launched two years ago, and they're sustaining fine through this currently. So anyway, I hope that, I hope that answers a little bit what you were saying.
That answers the question really on, on point. The other point that I wanted to make too is, if being South Butte County and Chico, I'd certainly not, not like to be in the position to be Orville being a higher rate just because we're in this jurisdiction and we're not receiving the benefits. So it's kind of makes it an even playing field in both Butte County, Chico, and Orville to have power at least at the more efficient cost, especially in Orville. Our largest employers have huge power demands, and I'll say the cannery, last time I was at the cannery and visited there, they have 2,800 electric motors. The Sarah Packaging, they're completely dependent on electricity. Roplast had to bring in their own generators to make sure they did not have a power outage. So their electricity demands are huge. So for a lot of our manufacturing here in this community, electricity is a big deal, huge deal.
And nobody's required, it's another choice, is what it is, so no one's required to purchase it. It's, it's another option, so you know, so that's, that's the, that's the, that's the importance of offering it at a less expensive.
And my great hope is that we're able to offer that to our heavy commercial users. So I appreciate the comments, I appreciate, certainly appreciate the concerns. I'm, I, at this point, I'm ready to support, so.
Councilmember Draper, do you wish to comment, please?
Yeah, I was just going to add that I'm in favor of the JPA, and, but I wanted to address something that Councilman Smith said about the post office. Because if you do just a little bit of research, you'll find that there was a law passed in 2006 which requires the post office to create a $72 billion fund to pay for the cost of its post-retirement healthcare benefits 75 years into the future. Now, from what I've read, this applies to no other federal agency or any private corporation. And without that burden, the post office would have shown a profit in each of the last six years, just FYI.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
At the, this, this crossgrains me as well. Not because it's potentially another option, options are always great, but, and I know I have friends that are in deep support of this, and I love them dearly. Personally, I am a government minimalist. I don't think the government has really any role in the private sector. I think, as tempting as it is for us to step in, I think it's more, for me, better for a private, another private organization to come in and offer power to citizens as opposed to the government stepping in and providing water, government stepping in and providing healthcare, the government stepping in and providing power, government stepping in providing food. You know, I think that it's important for the private sector to move in that, you know, the, I, my kids are learning the preamble of the Constitution right now, and I have having to memorize it, which I think is awesome. I'm getting a fresh history lessons of our founding fathers, and my son's having to memorize the five things that our founding fathers set to establish, and that was ensure justice, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide common defense, promote general welfare, and secure blessings of liberty. And, you know, I love the idea that our founders had what was a very small government, and for me, this is, goes in the opposite direction. And I'm not against options, I love options, but it really crossgrains me fundamentally as far as my view of what the government should and shouldn't do. So for that, yes, I'm, I'm on siding with, with Eric, and I think his points are pretty valid, but as well for me, is the, the, just the fundamental aspect of the government coming in and
Competing with the private sector.
It just crossgrains me deep. And I, and I'm cross-grain even just saying it, there's a definite inward like, ugh!
Yeah, I mean, my, my comment, I, I agree, I mean, I'm, I tend to agree in the smaller government myself, but I will also say there's provisions in the government to, against monopolies as well, and there's a reason for those. And I think we do have to be careful with, with when we do get situations where we have no opportunity to compete as well, and I think that's what, that's what this is born out of.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm totally on that same page of the government, when there's a monopoly, the government should, should step in and do something, but to step in and be that something, for me, are two separate things as opposed to, you know, AT&amp;T is, was a monopoly, and, you know, now we have Verizon and all the other quagmire of phone companies. I would love to see something more like that happen as opposed to the government stepping in being Verizon.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, so to the concern that Councilman Pittman raised about the supply of power, the ISO Independent System Operator determines how energy flows through the grid. So the source, this is, the sources don't change with the JPA fundamentally. They can, they can get into the energy production business, I mean, that is one thing, an option can be availed later on, but the suppliers are the suppliers. This is paper. Essentially, we're creating, the JPA is a paper machine, and, and it's a group of people that we're essentially hiring to go out on the open market, and, and they say we can be smarter than the purchasers at PG&E. PG&E's been doing this a while. To the issue of conglomerate, or, you know, PG&E, which controls the market, that's what the CPUC is all about, Public, California Public Utilities Commission, they are a regulated agency. And if you want to get into the fires, part of why we even, just, I'm going to digress for a moment. In my opinion, part of the issues we're having with fires as it pertains to PG&E is government failure as much as PG&E failure, because it's government's responsibility to ensure that PG&E is doing due diligence in maintaining their system. So when you look at the responsibility of the California Public Utilities Commission, they regulate costs, they tell PG&E when and how much, and the public engages in that as far as our cost. And so the, the CPUC is heavily involved, they're heavily regulated. So this idea that somehow, that they're decoupled from government dictation is just full hearty. And what we're doing is we're creating a whole new layer of government at the end of the day to compete on the open market. That is what we are doing, and to, to suggest otherwise, I, I don't think your eyes are wide open, in my opinion. Because, again, because we already have in place government agencies to provide that oversight, to engage the utilities, to set the market rate, and to, and to supposedly protect us, the public, when the utility operates in bad faith. And so those layers are there, in some ways, it's kind of a way to almost detract from some of those responsibilities. Additionally, I heard it say, well, the JPAs are there to help us segue into more sustainable power, and, because there's, there's arbitrary mandates by the state, you know, by 2050, we have to be, I think, at 100% renewable or something like the 2045, there's all these set points that are arbitrary, set by Sacramento. But the fact is, is that PG&E is already under those mandates. In fact, they're ahead of the game right now in providing us renewable resources. And so when you look at the full, it's, and the other thing is, this is a very complex issue, this is above my, I mean, to be honest, when you get into the weeds on this, it's above my personal pay grade, I mean, it, you know, this is a deep issue. But, so I'm at a 30,000-foot level here, I'm looking at it from a business model, and I'm being asked to participate in a new established layer of government to compete on the open market with a regulated agency that provides me a service, and I'm being told that that mix will then give me, the customer, a cheaper product. Man, that's a heavy lift for me, that's really tough to convince me of that, and that's kind of where I'm at, I mean, you know, fundamentally.
Anyone else? Looking for a motion to adopt resolution number 8906.
Well, I'll be, go ahead.
I move that we adopt resolution number 8906.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
The motion carries with five yeses and two nos.
Okay, moving on to number five, an urgency ordinance extending urgency ordinance 1836 for six months until June 30, 2021, allowing temporary residential use of recreational vehicles, mobile homes, and manufactured housing units by fire victims.
Mr. Mayor, this is a pretty straightforward, forward action that staff is looking for. On February 5 of 2019, due to the campfire, the council took the action to amend an ordinance to allow for camping, or for living in recreational vehicles, mobile homes, manufactured housing units, and to be, for those to be used on private property with a permitting process.
private property with a permitting process, uh, in light of the recent Bear Fire, which was part of the North Complex Fire, and the loss of housing in the Berry Creek and surrounding areas, Featherfall areas and such, I'm not trying to forget anybody or leave them out, the, um, city staff is requesting that we be allowed to extend this urgency ordinance until June 30 of 2021, at which time we will reassess it then, um, so what we're asking council to do is to merely allow for the extension of the ordinance, uh, ordinance number 1848.
Is there any comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any written communication or blue slips on this item.
Are there any comments or questions from this dais? Councilmember Pittman?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, quick question for staff on the, this particular issue, and I'm certainly in support of this issue, but at the end of the time, June 30, 2021, is it conceivable that some of these units, especially if they were the modular home, could be converted over to ADUs, accessory dwelling units?
Not under this ordinance.
They would have to meet all those, all those same requirements for a new ADU, and most of these aren't permanent foundations.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be open and ask that question, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the dais? Having none, looking for a motion to adopt urgency ordinance number 1848. So moved?
I'll second that.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper? Motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
Okay, with that, we're going to close, uh, section of, for public hearings. Moving on to regular business, purchase of one CAFS slide unit and associated emergency vehicle equipment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, back in August, we, I presented a staff report requesting a purchase of two vehicles for the fire station, it was an F-150 and an F-250, command vehicle and a utility vehicle, uh, that was presented in such a fashion that I would bring back at a later date the emergency equipment that goes inside the vehicle, the, the, the lights, the sirens, the radios, things of that nature, that's what this, uh, portion of this, uh, report is for, is for those items, but it's also for, for a CAF slide-in unit, what that is, CAF stands for Compressed Air Foam System, if you recall back in August of 2019, there was incident at the Orville Airport, they called it a plane crash, but the plane never made it off the ground, it, it did have a, a fire in it, and we discharged everything that was inside the 1974 ARF, which was the, uh, Airport Rescue Firefighting Vehicle, we talked about that, that's what one of these vehicles replacing, the CAFs is the system that's gonna go slide in the back of the, of the, of one of the units, and it's going to replace that item, uh, the, the cost to service, the 1974 unit is $40,000, and then it's gonna cost another $12,000 to fill it, this unit is significantly cheaper to fill, if you buy a five-gallon, uh, container of foam, it's like one capful for every 200 gallons of water that you put in there, so approximately, without going through this, approximately $40,000 of this purchase is that unit to replace that.
Do we have any, uh, comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any written communication on this item or blue slips.
Uh, Councilmember Pittman, what's just a comment from the dais?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, yeah, I certainly support this idea, it's a great improvement in, um, technology for the fire service, in fact, it's listed as 400% improvement, and that's by the Underwriters Laboratories, um, very happy the department's getting this, and even more happier, we had an incident, uh, some years ago where a plane crash did occur at the airport, and our firefighters were using the old system, and the old system had a very short reach, only 10 feet, and they were applying the foam, and they were within 10 feet in the pool of fluid flashback, and we had two firefighters burned, uh, this system has more than 100-foot reach, so we are not going to be putting our personnel in close proximity to the pool of fuel that might be from a plane crash, so, uh, huge improvement in firefighter safety beyond just the suppression capability, so I applaud you and, uh, uh, think it's a good moment for the department to have such a new piece of equipment, thank you.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Mayor, this is another example, during our, obviously, you know, I'm campaigning right now for reelection, one of the questions that came up during one of the forums was, uh, questioning a purchase of a copy machine that the, uh, the city bought, and, um, you know, there's, this is just to get another example of archaic equipment that the city is trying to replace, you know, we have a, here we have a 1974 fire vehicle that's outdated, that isn't as efficient as what we need today to properly provide safety and security for our citizens, so obviously for me, it's just a slam dunk to-
Just for clarification, we did not purchase a $20,000-
Right, there was, there was money put towards-
Yeah.
-a printer.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a multi-year lease.
Right, right.
And it, it was $10,000.
Not to say a printer, correct, so thank you for the correction.
Chief Dill, you need to check Facebook to get the facts.
Right.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I'm familiar with it.
Facebook's pretty accurate, I mean, they, they got their facts down, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, what, um, Chief, Chief Dill, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the funding for, for the purchase of this emergency equipment, and what, what would be the balance in that account?
As far as balance, I'm not, uh, I'm gonna have to talk to Ruth about that, but the appropriations are coming out of the Capital Asset Replacement Fund, as far as the current balance in there, I'm not exactly sure.
We have, we currently have approximately a million dollars in that account.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hatley?
Thank you, Mayor, um, Chief, now this, this piece of equipment's going to be housed at the, um, airport, like the old?
No, sir, it'll be slid in the back of a F-350 that's currently kept at the police, police and fire stations, so it'll be, it, this piece of equipment will be, the sliding unit will be slid into a vehicle, an F-350, and that F-350 is kept at Public Safety Department, and, and, and the, our, at the time of that, uh, airport incident, that ARF, that 1974 piece of equipment was kept at Public Safety Department at that time, we, we responded to the, to this incident from the Public Safety Department with that piece of equipment.
And Councilman Hatley, if I could, uh, add to that, the reason why it's not kept at the airports, we have nowhere to keep it at the airport, um, there is nowhere, uh, that the city has space out there, we, that is currently available, the hope would be is that once we do build the West Side, uh, safety facility, that it would be housed out there at that time, right now, there's just no space to put the vehicle, that's why the 74 got moved into town.
So the piece of equipment will be sitting at the station, and then if you need it, you come and load it into a 350, or it's already loaded?
It's loaded in a F-350, it's, it's referred to as a slide-in unit, it'll slide, it'll occupy the bed of the F-350 that we currently have, so it will be, that, when you drive that truck, you have that piece of equipment, it's, it's, it's attached to the vehicle.
Okay, and I know at one time, and Dave can, can help me on this one too, I, and of course, I know the rules change all the time, and, but, at one time, it was because of the, uh, rules and stuff for the airport that, you know, we had to have something out there, and I just want to make sure that we're not gonna run into some kind of a, um, mess somewhere down the line, uh, 'cause I know absolutely nothing about fire, all I know is from past history, and I just don't know what's changed that, and apparently it has, or we'd have it out there, I guess, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure, and I wanted it so that it's on record, so that anybody can, from the community that has a, a question about this, says, well, you know, you used to have one stationed there, 'cause it's, was strictly used just for that, most, I mean, it had that little foam unit on it, but, um, so that was, and that, and because of the response time and different things, that's why I was just questioning it.
I, I understand that, and I think, uh, it would be important to note, um, I don't have all of those, uh, attachments that I've, I've submitted, but this piece of equipment is multi-use, um, it can, it can be used for other, uh, as opposed to the ARF, the 1974 piece of equipment, this item we're purchasing has multi-use, not just, uh, something at the airport, fair to say.
And Councilman Hatley, the, uh, the housing situation at the airport is, we currently have a waiting list for hangars, whereas before we did not, and we were able to place it into a hangar, and it, that's kind of how we stored it out there, and as Chief Dill has indicated, this has a multifaceted uses, that we can use it in town, it can be used for a fire prevention, fire suppression if necessary, and is, at the cost of filling it for less than $20 to refill it, it's a very, uh, viable, usable piece of equipment. Now, to answer your question, why do we not have, um, a piece of fire equipment for, uh, aircraft wrecks at the airport, the FAA doesn't have our, uh, airport listed as a passenger airport, you certainly can fly out of there as a passenger, but we don't have a commercial flight, uh, that comes out of our airport, so we're not required to keep anything like that, nor will they fund anything, um, of that nature because of the fact that we don't have a commercial, um, uh, flight, uh, situation going out at our airport, and I think Scott Huber is uniquely qualified to speak about this as an airport attorney.
Yeah, so many of the airports that I, that I, uh, represent have both, uh, they've got, what is categorized as commercial traffic, some as cargo, some as, you know, commercial passenger traffic, anytime you have a subs, a subst, a substantial level of commercial traffic, whether it's cargo, or passenger, or both, then, then you are required to have personnel at the airport with the ARF equipment at the airport, um, but the, the level of traffic we have at the Orville Airport is substantially below where you would need to have, you know, personnel located at the airport, and, and in fact, because of, uh, because you're not required to have personnel there, it actually makes a good amount of sense to not have the equipment there, because the, if you have the personnel at the station, then the equipment can be at the station, they can go directly to the wreck instead of, or directly to the incident, instead of-
Right.
-going to the airport, then opening up a hangar, getting the equipment out that they need, then going to the, to the incident, so it actually increases response time by having the equipment where the personnel is.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yeah, I want to add, Councilmember Hatley is exactly correct, uh, back in 74, though, part of the reason that the emphasis was put, that vehicle had to stay at the airport is the FAA did fund that equipment, this equipment is not being funded by the FAA, so it doesn't have those restrictions, but you, you're correct in that, um, observation.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I think the fact that Mr. Pittman remembers that is pretty impressive.
Easy now, easy, I, and, and actually, I hope that the pickup sells well, because I actually was the one that picked it up when we first bought it for the city, that was my first job working here, so-
Nice.
1974, and how many miles are on it?
3,900. What?
3,900, original.
Looking for a motion to authorize the purchase of emergency equipment for recently purchased OFD vehicles as well as a slide-in CAFS unit for a total of $75,756.94.
So moved.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
I'm sorry, I think I was on mute, I, I said yes.
The motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to reports, discussions, correspondence, do we have any announcements from council members?
I do.
Councilmember Smith?
So, get my notes together, so there was a, a grant award where, uh, because of COVID, the county had made available grants, uh, to our local businesses between 15 and $25,000, and, uh, there was a lottery process, 48 businesses applied, 44 have been awarded, uh, the opportunity to continue on with the paperwork to get those grants, so, uh, there'll be more to come on that, but I just wanted to report out and just, uh, thank the county for the tremendous work of, uh, sis, for sustainability for our businesses that have been impacted by the COVID-19, and so that's just good news, uh, additionally, I, just a report out from the COC, uh, there was a project that, uh, again, a COVID, uh, it, because of that, uh, there were issues that were insurmountable, uh, for, uh, this particular program, and so $790,000 came back to the COC, this was HEAP funding, that, again, just for continuity of conversation, this goes back to when the previous council made that declaration of a shelter crisis, it made available, uh, some four-plus million dollars to our area, so this is a, this is a significant, almost a fourth of that funding, and, uh, the COC, uh, has unanimously voted to award three of our local agencies, and broke this up into $215,000 allotments, uh, so the Haven of Hope, uh, brought forth a project, and so that, that 215,000, uh, has gone to fund their program, the Hope Center, to help them, uh, in their relocation efforts, um, towards a building that they're buying at the south end of town, uh, which is a whole nother conversation, and also to, uh, with the Orville Rescue Mission, and, uh, and they had a proposal as well to expand, uh, and to potentially purchase, uh, some acreage over there to expand their operations, I don't know if, would it be appropriate to talk about what's happened as of October 1, with the Rescue Mission, with that annexation?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, just to let everyone know that, uh, the, um, annexation of the area around the Rescue Mission was approved by LAFCO on October 1st, it should record at the county November 1, and, uh, so once that happens, they'll be officially a part of the city of Orville, so, uh, I guess, congratulations, City of Orville, we're expanding our boundaries, and I'm looking forward to good things happening as we move on with our relationship, uh, with the Rescue Mission and all that they do to help mitigate the impacts of, of the unhoused, and that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodson?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of things to report out, please bear with me, one is, I was able to attend a broadband seminar, and I have a few takeaway points from, from them, and I, I believe that, um, it is important to expedite technology for, for vulnerable populations and, um, specifically rural commu, communities, and that's what the broadband, um, addressed rural communities, uh, it was interesting to, to note that because of COVID, broadband connectivity has become a top priority in rural communities, since COVID, approximately 40 million people had to file for unemployment, and a lot of them, because they did not have gra, broadband, or, or a strong internet connectivity, uh, it was hard for them to, um, follow the progression of their claims, in addition, we know how it impacted approximately 53 million school-aged children, uh, kindergarten to, to 12, and that were sent home in, in March and had to attend school, uh, for learning. Once again, many of these young youth, um, they live in the rural communities, and they lack the internet service, or that the late was sporadic, I don't know how many of you either heard or saw the video on Facebook where there were two young children that were doing their homework on the sidewalk, um, next to a fast-food establishment, and I remembered that there was an article in the Chico Enterprise, and our previous mayor, Linda Dahlmeier, was a very strong advocate for improving broadband in Orville, so I just wanted to share with you, um, a little quote from that letter that, um, Mayor Dahlmeier had sent to, uh, the Chico, um, Enterprise Record Newspaper on March 14, 2018, and I quote, "It is the people who need the access the most who do not have it, residents of rural Northern California who are already facing barriers in getting equitable health, education, and economic opportunities, lack a, access to high-speed internet, broadband is taking its place alongside water, sewer, and electricity as essential infrastructures for communities, rural Northern California lacks the infrastructure needed to close the increasingly expanding digital divide." I'm going to move on to the League of California Cities, I did attend virtually the annual conference, there was a wide variety of daily topics and, and breakout sex sessions that the attendees had the opportunity to, um, we would toggle back and forth out of discussions with these, uh, it was definitely user-friendly, there were topics and engagement in regards to social media, layoffs, furloughs, and, and concessions, negotiating in these challenging times, uh, we also looked at the role of- We also looked at the role of local governments in adapting to climate change. We also looked at, is our city really prepared with the rising pension costs? Because I was sent as a delegate of the City of Orville, I was part of the resolution process the last day of the conference, which was a three-day conference. And there was only one item that was pulled in regards to the resolutions, and it is a resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities, calling for an amendment of Section 230 of the Communications Decency Act of 1996, which requires social media companies, which would require social media companies to remove material which promote criminal activities. That resolution did pass, but not without a lot of dialogue and controversy. Overall, the conference was very well attended, the information gleaned was and has an ongoing benefit and impact to both urban and rural cities in the state of California, and that is going to finalize my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm surprised, actually, Eric, were you going to do anything on the census that came out? Business Census?
I talked about that. I did, yeah. I appreciate you bringing that.
No worries.
I have those available now at the Chamber of Commerce.
I'm really proud of Orville as state in the census, you know, as other cities are really struggling a lot more than we are. You know, the Orville, the citizens and the community just shows a stability, and even in many ways, an increase. You know, obviously, it's trying times with the pandemic that seems like it has just never going to end. But in light of that, I'm just proud of Orville. My wife and I ate at the Union downtown this weekend, and, you know, when they told me it was a 45-minute wait, I was actually really excited about that. Just the buzz that was downtown, and that's happening downtown. You know, if you don't, if you're not seeing what's happening downtown Orville, I encourage you to come check it out, because it's amazing. On top of that, Purple Line, just a few, just a few things I'm proud of. Purple Line opening up their vibe, Pappan Grill, Papa Cita's opened yesterday, and Joe's Lunched and Go. Lunched and Go, I've seen him a lot more out and about, and set up spaces, and that's awesome food, great prices. So anyway, I'm proud of that. Another thing I'm proud of Forville, to continue on, is the bike path and the goats. I don't think there's enough, just word and just excitement in the city as far as cleaning up finally our beautiful bike path. And my family walked that, gosh, yesterday. And just the beauty, being able to see the river the whole way, being able to see around us for yards, you know, and feeling a lot safer than we ever have down there. I'm excited for what we'll continue to clean up that area, clean up that path. So I'm excited for those things. One thing I do want to say, though, in light of the fact that we are in the middle of an election right now, I'm definitely concerned for the Orville election, I'm concerned for our area election. I hear rumors of doubled ballots, but today I saw proof of a double ballot, as a friend of mine snapped a photo of two ballots he's received. So I'm concerned of the future of what we're going to see with California with, I'm sure, I've heard that's going on, but now I actually see it firsthand. So, anyway, those are my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Pittman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to report that yourself and myself and the city administrator and assistant city administrator joined us for a tour of the sewer treatment plant last week, I think it was. And it's, it was a good thing to see for us all, and I appreciate city staff coming, but also to realize the new equipment that's down there, in terms of a lot of different things that are going on, and the improvements, and then the future of the new inflow pumping plant's going to be a big improvement to that facility's operation. It was a good tour, take about half a day, really, going through the whole place. It's a big facility, and you don't realize how big it is, but I appreciate city staff coming down there and getting the firsthand observation of it. I know Scott got to talk about the beauty of the levee. I don't know if I want to talk about the beauty of the sewer plant, I'm not sure. But it's working real well, and improvements are coming.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment?
Just for clarity, something that was said.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. This is vis a via Google, so it could be amended, but I just out of curiosity, because of something Councilwoman Draper had said about the USPS and their debt. So according to Google, they're in debt $160.9 billion, and 119 of that is from retiree benefits, so it's a significant chunk, but that still leaves about $40 billion, just doing rough math from other issues. So I appreciate, though, that comment, and forces me to do my homework, so thank you. But they're still deep in water, so, anyway, without getting into that whole thing.
Can I just respond to that really quick?
Councilmember Draper?
Thank you, Mayor. If anyone's interested in reading about this, there's an excellent article dated July 15, 2019. It's called "How Congress Manufactured a Postal Crisis and How to Fix It," and it's from the Institute for Policy Studies. Thank you.
Anyone else? Piggybacking, dovetailing?
Of course, Matt Leiden.
Yeah. Okay. I have one thing. I'd just like to use my time here to remind council that, of our city municipal code, that in 2.08.010, council members and committee are not to issue orders to subordinates. So no council member or committee member shall issue any order or direction to any officer or subordinate. What we've kind of gotten into lately here is there's a, council members are calling employees direct and giving direction, and that is against our policies, so please refrain from that. Employees have been instructed not to answer cellphones, because what happens when we don't go through the proper channels of who we're supposed to contact, which would be our managers, administrator, city administrator, and assistant city administrators, those are the only people that we're supposed to contact. And it ends up in chaos, because we have employees that are running around scared because a council member called them, and they want to please them, and they don't know what to do. So, so please, let's adhere to the city municipal code. I'm sure that we're all going to be very cooperative with that. And if no one else has any comments, any future agenda items? Administration reports, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have passed out a non-named document. It speaks about housing. I wanted to inform the council that last week, we've heard your direction and followed your policy, and we've been pursuing affordable housing in the city. The document that I gave to you tonight, and that I distributed to our virtual council members via email, is the results of what the funding that came out last week for affordable housing in Orville, and what we have to look forward to. Orville received five affordable housing projects. The first one will be Sierra Heights Senior Apartments Phase 2, there'll be 47 new apartments in there. Olive Ranch Apartment Phase 1, there'll be 80 new apartments in there. Olive Ranch Apartments Phase 2, there'll be 79 new apartments in there. Mitchell Avenue Senior Apartments, there'll be 35 new apartments in there. And Riverbend Family Apartments Phase 1 will have 71. For a total of 312 new apartments in the next two years, it will be made available to those that are low-income and very low-income. The city has, is rapidly reaching our RENA numbers in the areas of low and very low. Where we need to refocus our attention now is into the moderate and above-moderate housing level, so that we can continue to reach those numbers. So we've made wonderful strides in that. We're probably in the top 10% of communities in the state of California now, as far as reaching our numbers. So your directions and policies has led to that, and these are something that you wanted, it's now being fulfilled. It's going to take about two years to complete these projects, but we will be receiving plans in November, permits will be issued by April, and then it's just a matter of going through the process of actually doing the building. The other thing that we were notified of last week was that the city did receive a million-dollar grant for the 2019 home application for first-time homebuyer program. So we are able to also address that for those that are not looking to live in affordable housing or an apartment, that we are making homeownership affordable and achievable by some folks by having these home, first-time homebuyer program funds available. So we've made tremendous strides in this area. Amy has done, Amy Bergstrom has done a wonderful job for us in those areas. If she was here tonight, she would let you know that I was mostly correct on this, but she's not here, so I guess that makes me completely correct until tomorrow morning, about 6:30, when I see her, and I'll be mostly correct. So, but anyway, she's done a wonderful job, our department has too. I just wanted to report back to you that, you know, what may seem like it takes a long time, and not a lot's being accomplished, it was accomplished. I mean, this is huge. I mean, you just don't see this kind of progress in a community in this amount of time normally, so job well done, council. The second thing that I'd like to report is that, if I could get Ruth to come up here with me, please? I want to congratulate Ruth. I bought her some balloons and some cupcakes. These are supposed to be congratulatory cupcakes, but what they had available were the Ghost, and that just caught my attention, so I bought Ghost when I was down there. But anyway, I just want to congratulate Ruth and the Finance Department, because, again, this year, they were awarded the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So this is something, you know, that they work very hard back there. A lot of times, you don't know what finance is doing, because, you know, they're doing the books. I mean, they're doing the really heavy lifting and the hard part of our work, I mean, is the lifeblood of our organization. But I just wanted to congratulate Ruth, tell her thank you for all you do, I appreciate all the work you do, and we really want to say thank you for doing not only just consistent, reliable work, but also doing award-winning work. Thank you, Ruth.
Speech?
Well, thank you. We strive to do a good job back there, and we're just happy that we can provide service to all this, all these new projects going on, and everything's going on. It's nice that we're busy and thriving and doing well, so nice to be a part of that.
You do a great job, Ruth. Thank you. Ruth, I'd like to ask you something. I told you that you couldn't ever retire, because we would become what?
I don't remember.
Ruthless. Tom?
For a minute, I thought that you were going to say Ruthless cooking. I want to emphasize what Bill said in terms of, I think we might be the only community in the state that's meeting its low and very low regional housing needs assessment. I'm not aware of any other community that's doing that, besides that here.
Appreciate that, Tom. Leo? Joe?
I have a couple of things. As most of you know, there was a fire in the city last week. Really think that we have our firefighters to thank for how quick they were able to get on top of that, and keep it to 25, 30 acres. They had a lot of help from CAL FIRE, they even had help from the air. And if it wasn't for what they did, then we would have had a big, a bad day, I think. We did evacuations in the downtown area because the fire had made it to the river's edge on the north side, and it was actually spot firing on the other side, on the south side of the river. A lot of people out there said, man, if those goats hadn't been here, this would have probably started a fire on this side. So very thankful the way it went down. We had a lot of help from outside law enforcement, the HCS, CAL FIRE, and everything, so it was a win, I think, in our, even though we did lose the structure, it was not an inhabited structure, and there was a little bit of damage on some of the houses in the blust. But overall, I think we did pretty good. Just a real quick update on hiring. I know we talked about positions last time. We actually have identified two individuals that we're going to sponsor through the next Police Academy in January, January 4th they'll begin. One is a current employee as an MLE, one is an outside applicant. We've narrowed down our dispatch pool down to seven for two current vacancies. We're going to interview all seven next week, and then we'll move on to police officer and MLE.
Thank you. I'd like to comment on that fire, please. I got a call when it broke out, and I was here, of course, and I left to go check on my property. Traffic was heavy, there was a lot of people trying to get over there and see that fire. A guy pulled out in front of me, I mean, just right there, and I T-boned him, I hit him right at first to Montgomery. And it was, it was pretty bad, it totaled his car. I was, even though I was only doing 20 miles an hour, I drive a big 350 solid steel truck, so that's not good for a small car. But I just wanted to thank one of our local citizens who came out immediately and brought us water and anything we needed. She was very attentive, and that's Celia Hirschman, so thank her. Appreciate that. Dawn?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I just had a quick report from our Public Works Supervisor, P. 31, has been active in our parks and in our streets in pruning our trees. They've done a fantastic job, I'm being reported, and they've started in Hammond Park, they've worked through Fifth Avenue, Burden Downer, the Chinese Temple, and Safford Park, and so they're doing a great job. Sherwood Construction also started today with the back of our drainage inlets, and they said, so far, so good. So we'll have another report at our next council meeting. For our development impact fee update, we've received the second draft of that report. Staff has reviewed it and confirmed that we are okay to move forward with this, so we hope to have that draft here, that final draft, for the council in November. That will be a public hearing. Also, for our municipal services review, we just received the first draft of our departmental review for the Fire Department. I hope to receive the Fire Department by tomorrow. Staff will continue to review those departments as they come in, we will present them to council, and then ultimately, that municipal services review will go to LAFCO. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing.
Okay. Mayor? Councilmember Pittman?
Yeah, I'm going to ask a quick question here, only because it's kind of on the topic. In fact, I got another notice just now at my home for another power safety shutdown that's supposed to occur very, very soon, next day or two. But at the same time, I also received a notice that they would be providing generator power to my home. Is there anyone that could advise us or give us some?
I think what they're trying to tell you is that if people aren't aware, down behind our corporation yard, behind the switch station, or the switching station that's located on Veach, there is a fleet of generators down there. So now, we may be disconnected from the grid in town, but those generators will be activated, and you will be fed powered, it'll just become from a local-generated source as opposed to the grid that you're normally on.
I appreciate that, because I'm sure, as just one of many of our people who got the same notice I did, they're probably confused about, you're shutting my power off, but you're going to provide me a generator. So I appreciate that explanation, and if people notice those big, huge generators there, that's what they're for, I guess.
There's probably, I'm going to guess, Leo might be able to help me with this, there's probably 25, they're semi, it's semi-trailers back there, and these generators are providing the electricity for the customers that do lose the electricity because of the switching necessary to keep them off the grid.
All right, thank you. With that, we are going to adjourn till November 3, 2020.